Good evening, it's a little too quiet in here all of a sudden. Could we, this is a regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Today is August 19th. Could we all please rise? We'll begin our meeting by saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mayor Elliott?
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present. So, the first item we have on the agenda, we have minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, July 15th. Motion to accept the minutes and place on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor, signify by say and aye, and the opposed, motion carries, the minutes are adopted and placed on file. Before we get into the regularly scheduled agenda, an entertaining motion to suspend rules to just allow us to bring in, it's an item that didn't make the agenda, but it's to issue two citations to softball coaches at Lowell High School, Mr. Rick O'Brien along with William Billy Houghey. Motion to suspend rules by Mr. Leary, seconded by Counselor Ross Sikowitz. All those in favor, Ms. Rossikowitz, all those in favor, signify by say and aye, and the opposed, motion carries. These are, knowing that we only meet once a month, we had a request, a little while ago actually, to recognize these two coaches at Lowell High School with long and distinguished records. So with that, I would like to ask both coaches if you could come to the podium, Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Houghey. This is on behalf of the entire school committee. We thank you for your service, your dedication throughout the years. You have a list of many accomplishments, and I have two citations on behalf of the city that we would like to issue to you and on behalf of the administration, the school, the high school, as well as the entire city. First, we'll do Rick O'Brien. This citation, "Be hereby known to all that the City of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers our sincere gratitude and congratulations to Richard Rick O'Brien upon your retirement from coaching at Lowell High School." Rick coached softball at Lowell High School for the past 38 years? Thirty-eight years. I want to make sure I read that right. He spent seven years as an assistant coach, then went on to be a head coach for 31 years. The highlight of Rick's coaching career at Lowell High School is winning the 2005 Division One state title. Your countless hours coaching showed your commitment to your players and to Lowell High School. Rick has left a measurable impact in the lives of the players at Lowell High School by exemplifying sportsmanship, leadership to your teams, lessons they will carry with them for the rest of their lives. The entire city of Lowell extends our deepest appreciation to Richard O'Brien for 38 years of coaching softball at Lowell High School. I therefore, Rodney M. Elliott, along with all my colleagues here in the school committee, we offer our best to you upon your retirement, given on this 19th day of August 2015. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Best wishes, and we'd like to have a say a few words. Thank you.
I wasn't really planning on this. I'd like to thank the mayor and the school committee members for this honor. I'd like to point out that Ms. Martin, to my left, just a couple of years back, was an outstanding student in one of my history classes. And to my right, Dave Conway, who is a longtime colleague and friend at Lowell High School. While I'm here, I'd like to also thank Armin, I guess who's partly responsible for this, Armin Hebert, who's sitting behind us. And just a couple of other things. Sue Callahan, who introduced me to this, to coaching in 1977, to my assistant coaches, of which I've had a couple dozen, but for one, Bill Houghey, standing next to me, who spent the last 23 years as my co-coach. To Mrs. Obi, my wife, my beautiful wife Debbie, who's been softball's, Lowell High softball's number-one fan, known to, as to the girls, as Mrs. Obi. And to the, last but not least, to...
Could we have Mrs. Obi come up and join you for the people at home? We're not going to let you escape to sitting back. Time be right in the forefront.
And last, to the couple of hundred female student athletes that I've had the honor to coach for the last 38 years. I've always been amazed at their, at their ability to combine academics and athletics and do it well. Many of them also would throw in part-time work and still, still show tremendous competitiveness, loyalty to the high school, loyalty to the high school, and just all-around great young women, and who have left me with some memories that I'll cherish for a long time. And one of those memories, as the mayor mentioned, was the state championship in 2005, and sitting with Armin back is Katie Hebert, who is the, who was the MVP basically of our team in 2005. Thank you very much.
Thank you to both for your dedication, and 38 years is, that's just a remarkable, that's just a remarkable achievement. And you are right, it was, it was Mr. Hebert. He thought he was going to fly under the radar, but that wasn't going to happen, but he, he made sure that we got this done, so, and it, so we thank you, Armin, and Katie, for being here as well. Mr. Houghey, if you could come to the podium. Nice to see you. Again, on behalf of the city, this citation to you, Mr. Houghey. "Be hereby known to all that the City of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts we hereby offer our sincere gratitude and congratulations to William Billy Houghey upon your retirement from coaching at Lowell High School." Billy coached softball at Lowell High School for over 20 years. As assistant coach, he was a fixture at the softball field. He was always out there to help head coach Rick O'Brien day in and day out. Billy always have a big smile, and you always do have a big smile, whether the team won or the team lost. You were the biggest cheerleader for the Lowell High School softball. A highlight of your coaching career as well, Lowell High School was winning the 2005 Division One state title. Billy has left an immeasurable impact as well in the lives of the players at Lowell High School by exemplifying sportsmanship and leadership to the teams, lessons they will carry for the rest of their lives. Now therefore, I Rodney M. Elliott, along with the members of the school committee, we hereby offer all the best to you upon your retirement, given on this 19th day, 2015. Again, on behalf of the entire school committee, and the entire city, and all the hundreds of players that you've coached, we thank you and we congratulate you as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Rodney. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everyone for this honor, but I'd really like to thank Mr. O'Brien. I would have never had an opportunity to coach if it was for Mr. O'Brien. And they're losing a good man, that's all I can tell you. He's a, I've never seen a man coach as well as Mr. O'Brien. Respectful. He preached education. I can't say enough about him. And I'd also like to thank Katie Hebert and Mr. Hebert for bringing this up. I've said it all along, coaches lose games, kids win games. That was our best player we've ever coached. I can't say enough, and just thank you so much. Thank you.
We have Mr. De, the athletic tractor, Mr. De Propia. Do you want to come up and say a few words? Thank you for joining us. We appreciate you taking time to come down and, and present these tonight, and then I know a number of members want to, want to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Superintendent, members of the committee and central administration. On behalf of Headmaster Martin, we'd like to express our sincere thanks and gratitude to coaches O'Brien and Houghey for their many years of, oh, it's just my iPad, sir, for their many years of dedicated service to Lowell High School and the student athletes in the city of Lowell. Thank you very much, and coaches, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Propia, we appreciate it. Now, I know, Mr. Hebert, Armin, I know that you can talk, because we see you at city council meetings, but I'd like to ask Katie to come up first.
He's the speaker.
He is the speaker, you are right. Mr. Hebert, a couple of words? No, I put her on the spot.
I'm not well at words, and I turn all red. With my tan. As a freshman, I tried out for the softball team, and the whole time I was nervous that I wasn't going to make it. And then I saw the list, and saw these two, and they were like, "Congratulations." So, I thought it was a big deal, my freshman year. And they took me right under their wings, and they just let me play. And they told me to love the game, and I did. And I love playing for them.
And we thank you. MVP, that's quite an achievement. Thank you for coming up, and the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. Great job, Katie, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know I'm not really good at speaking at these type of things, but...
We have a five-minute rule here, too, Ms. Hebert.
I came into contact, I've known Billy a long time, Rick O'Brien, I've met through softball. For someone to coach 38 years at doing that, I've coached a lot in my life, and for someone to take his time out for 38 years and coach a softball team, that's, that's such a great thing. You know, I mean, to put the time and the effort into it, with Billy along his side for most of the part, I, I had the pleasure of helping these guys out a little bit. In the 12 years I had my four daughters going through there, it was a good experience. We had our rough times, we had our good times. 2005, that was probably the best time, you know? But, like I said, anybody who puts their time and effort in, and I said, I, they had a recent retirement party for Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Houghey, and I said to Mrs. O'Brien, I says, "How did you get them to retire?" She says, "Well, Armin this year," he says, she says, "I, he, I said to him, "Are you going to coach this year?" And he said, "Yeah." She says, "Okay, I'm off to California to see the grandkids, and I'm leaving myself." And I says, "Well, that probably did it." And I says, "That's a great thing, but it's truly an honor. Thank you for all your help, thank your assistance." I think I might have maybe emailed her a couple of times, I don't know, and we talked, but thank you for all, all the help in getting this done.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Hebert. So with that, we'll move on to, I'm sorry, Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, I just want to say that the city of Lowell and the school department have been a lot richer by having these two individuals, Billy Houghey and Rick O'Brien. I've known, I've known them for many, many years, and education was always paramount. They were excellent coaches, and I think probably more important, they were incredible role models. So again, I thank them for their service, they've done an absolutely incredible job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, state championships are few and far between. There's only a handful in the history of Lowell High School in all sports, so congratulations on that. I wanted to ask you guys, do you remember the quote, "The beach can wait"? "The beach can wait" was in the paper, but said by one of your players on that team, and I can tell you that she still has it posted up in the kitchen in her, in her house, so, so congratulations and thanks for your service.
Thank you very much. With that, we thank you, have a, have a great night, and once again, you're very welcome.
Thanks, thank you so much.
So with that, while, I'd like to also entertain a motion to suspend the rules to take an item under new business out of order. It's a budget transfer. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott, to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by say and aye, and the opposed, that motion carries. Motion to take item number 15, the budget transfer, out of order. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening. I, would you like, I'm going to let Mr. Antonelli explain about this item.
Mr. Antonelli?
Yes, thank you. We had an invoice in the amount of $7,516.17 for the monthly rental of administrative space at 144 Merrimack Street that was inadvertently not paid before the end of fiscal year 1415. In addition, the purchase order that was open to pay for that rental expense was closed, so when the books closed, that $7,516 went into the school committee's suspense account. What I'm recommending to the school committee is that you transfer the amount of $7,516.17 from the suspense account to the central office rental account, so that this bill can be paid.
Thank you, Mr. Antonelli. Questions on the transfer?
Just, just a kind of little housekeeping, too. This is also part of the item number eight, if we could tie that in, too, so we don't have to do, it was part of the finance subcommittee meeting, which met, just to discuss this one item. So what, basically, I don't know if you have to vote on, but just essentially, what we did is we recommended to the full committee, three to nothing, to approve the transfer.
Okay.
So make that as a form of motion to approve, to approve the transfer as outlined.
Motion by Mr. Larry, seconded by Mr. Conway on the, on the motion to approve the transfer as a result, so, Mr. Larry, you give a report anyway? Do you have some other items on the finance side?
No, that was the only item. I mean, that's kind of why we could tie number eight and this one together, it was basically exactly what Mr. Antonelli outlined, was what we discussed, and made a recommendation to the full committee to approve.
Okay, motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway to approve the transfer. Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Motion to entertain the report of the meeting, the finance subcommittee meeting of Wednesday, August 19th, by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor signify by say and aye, and the opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, the report is accepted, adopted, and placed on file. So we will return now to the item number four, beginning of the agenda, permission to enter. Permission to enter, August 19, 2015. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, and again, I'm going to ask Mr. Frank Antonelli.
Mr. Antonelli, and permission to enter, two items.
Yes, we're asking for the school committee to grant permission to enter for contracts for two items. One is for the Bob McCloskey Insurance Agency, which provides insurance for, student accident insurance, and it's in the amount of $24,997. And the second is the William James College, Inc., the mass school of professional psychology, in the amount of $33,000. And that particular item is funded by an elementary counseling grant. So I recommend that the school committee grant the administration permission to enter for those two contracts.
Thank you, Ms. Antonelli. Questions on these two items? Move to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have memorials. We have two memorials. The first memorial is for Brendan T. Durkin, father of Kathy Woods, Riley's school assistant principal. Dottie Durkin, Maury's school teacher, grandfather of Evan Quealy, Merklin's school teacher, and father-in-law of Pam Durkin, Maury's school teacher. Second memorial is for Julia Hassan, Lowell High School graduate from the class of 2015. Could we all please rise and darken the chambers for a moment of silence? Moving on to motions of the evening, the first motion by Mr. Gendron requests the superintendent begin to work on a long-term plan for Lowell Public Schools. Seconded by Mr. Conway, Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I wonder if I could, before we move on to this agenda, if I could just make a quick comment on the memorials?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
I, I wanted to personally send condolences to the Durkin family for the loss of Mr. Brendan Durkin, who's a lifelong Lowellian, built a great family here in Lowell, and certainly one that made a real impact on the community. He'll be missed, but I think the entire Lowell High School and Lowell Public School system family was shaken to the core in the loss of Julia Hassan last week. And, you know, I think that she is one of those students that we think of as our, as our pride and joy. And National Honor Society honor student, choral arts band, you name it. And it's, it's a tremendous loss and a horrible tragedy, so I wanted to send condolences to that family and all her friends. And I also wanted to just quickly commend Assistant Superintendent Durkin and Headmaster Brian Martin for their actions in the wake of that tragedy, opening the school, calling in grief counselors, reaching out to the families of everybody involved. I think that was a really quick and dignified way to act, and I think it really made, made an impact. So again, condolences to both of those families. And I think that somebody like Julia Hassan, I didn't know her personally, but I think hearing about the type of student she was, I feel like that her impact and her spirit will probably live on at Lowell High School, so we can take, so I'll send that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron.
Moving on to the motion, I had, through you to the superintendent, Mr. Superintendent, you know, you have the advantage here of having a fresh perspective on Lowell Public Schools, and I think that this would be an ideal time, and I think you're probably already thinking about it already, but I just want to formalize it in, in the form of a motion, asking you to begin work on a long-term strategic plan for Lowell Public Schools, one that we can, you know, work together on hopefully over, over the months to come, and set the tone for where we're going in the future. I don't know if you had a comment on that, but feel free.
I do. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. We actually have, we have been thinking about that, and this, we started, we launched something already this morning with the Leaders Summit, Summer Institute. We launched that effort. We're hoping to bring to the school committee in about nine months from now, we're planning about eight to nine months, bring a full strategic plan. We'll probably come to you before that to ask you to participate as well, because we would like to have participation from various stakeholders in the community, parents and so forth. This morning, we had the, the pleasure of hosting Dr. Liz Citi, who is one of the authorities on strategic planning. She's a professor in Harvard and longtime educator as well in K-12, so, and she came on her own initiative, and she, she likes Lowell, and she did that on her own dime. She just wanted to, to present to Lowell. So we thanked her, and, and she was a very good start. So we hopefully will be hearing from us more, and, and ways also how to engage you, and formalize it into a formal strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Further discussion on this motion? All those in favor signify by say and aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion passes. Subcommittee report, we already received the subcommittee report from Ms. Leary. Anything further to add, Mr. Chairman? No? Okay.
No, just make a motion to approve the minutes. Well, we can't, actually, we'll do that at the next meeting, sorry.
Moving on to reports from the superintendent, first report, parent and student handbook update. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yeah, this, this report has actually been approved, if I understand well, prior by the school committee. What this report has, you have it obviously with all the details, but I just want to summarize it for the public. What it does have is three minor things. The first one is a change of certain names, mine, first one, new superintendent and things like that. And we also thought that it would be important to, to put as well the name of other, of other administrators, for the public to know who, who they should be contacting, and for our staff members. That's the one, one minor change that we had in there. The most important change is that, I think when, this was presented in the subcommittee and was recommended by the subcommittee but was never brought to you before, is that we want to go follow the lead of the Lowell High School, who had last year piloted going strictly in a electronic version of the handbook with available print copies on demand. So parents will be given the option to get a print copy. Last year, it was very successful, saved a lot of money. We think if we follow the same trend, we will save upward of $10,000, even more, more than that, $10,000 to $15,000 saved by not having to print it. Yet, we still have the option to print it for parents who would like to have the print. All they have to do is fill up a very simple, two, three lines form. So that's, that's the major change. The last change in this one, a very minor change as well, is just a, some clarification on some, on some high school procedures for, for failure when, when, when a student fails a course because of excessive absenteeism, excessive absences. In the old one, it didn't specify that that's why they failed, so this was recommended to be, to be, to be putting that in there. Nothing really has changed in the rules or anything like that, it's just a clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you.
Motion to, I'm sorry, Ms. Rossikowicz.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the superintendent, one of the questions that was raised in that subcommittee meeting was, or at least my question, was gauging the success of going online with our handbooks at the high school, and were we able to determine by the numbers, and the number of downloads that were had, in terms of, you know, how many parents actually went on LHS's website and actually downloaded that handbook and actually read it. And the same thing, you know, if we're going to carry this through district-wide, my concern would be, again, not having that data to back it up, but if we're going to move forward with that this year, and I'm all in favor of cost savings, however, we want to make sure that all of our parents are getting the information. Anybody can sign a document saying that they read it or received it, and that might not be the case. So if we can measure that over the course of the year, or at least this fall, and get a better sense as to that data, to certainly, you know, provide a framework for driving this particular online initiative.
Yeah, I don't know what was done last year, obviously, but yes, we can do that.
Okay.
It's a very simple thing to do.
Excellent, thank you.
We can keep track of that and report back to the school committee on those things.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Other questions? Seeing none, motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor signify by say and aye, and the opposed? Motion passes, the report is accept, accepted and placed on file. Next report, the superintendent, IACS Annual Report. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, this, this is the report from the Innovation Academy. It's a charter school that by law they have to submit to all the school committees of all members, and Lowell is just one of a few.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Mr. Superintendent, who appoints the board members for the school year? Can we find that out?
Yes, yes, we can find that out.
I'm just curious who...
Of the charter school, yeah.
Who are the representatives? I, I do see the list, but I'm wondering if it's updated on a regular basis. Okay. All those, motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Larry, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by say and aye, the opposed, motion passes. Next report of the evening, open positions. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, again, we, this is a, the usual report of the open positions. Any questions, we're happy to answer.
Questions on open positions? Motion to accept the report and place on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by say and aye, the opposed, that report is accepted as well. Next item, number 12, we have personnel report. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, this report again is one, a report presented to us by Director of HR, Mr. Cassidy, and I would entertain any question if you have on the report, and I would request a motion to accept the report. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Questions for the superintendent on personnel report? Motion to approve by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Larry. All those in favor signify by say and aye, and the opposed? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed? That report is accepted as well. Move on to item number 13, we have a list, the list of eligible teachers. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, again, this is our usual list of eligible teachers, and I think it's also prepared by Mr. Cassidy, and I would request a motion to accept the report.
Question, motion to accept by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed? That motion carries as well. We have item number 14, home education, this report. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, we have a request of four families requesting to homeschool their children. If we are to grant this request, the number of homeschool, well, families homeschooling will be, will go up to 37, with a total number of 55 children homeschooled for next year.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify, roll call, excuse me.
Mr. Gendron.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Mayor Elliott.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas, approved. We already took up item number 15 under new business. That concludes the posted agenda of business before the school committee tonight. Entertain a motion to adjourn by Mr. Larry, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed? That motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you for the work. See, no yell, no yell.